Good evening, I'd like to call the study session in March to order. And just to let the record reflect that all board members are present except for Dr. Prater. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for the delay in starting. I was having some technical difficulties that appeared to have been solved, so that's great. Before we get going into the meeting, I would just like to, it's been a busy month for Springfield Public Schools, for the board, and for our community. Yesterday was an exciting day as we welcomed Dr. Jungman and Carrie Jungman to Springfield. I think a lot of people showed up to meet Dr. Jungman and ask questions and give insight. I'd like to publicly thank our community for that support. I'd like to publicly thank our employees. A lot of people were involved in that process. I'd also like to just publicly thank Teresa Bledsoe and her staff for all the work that has gone in to this process up to now. Yesterday, as we were working through what we would do about the weather, she and her staff were putting together a web stream of both of the public forums, so I think, appreciate that. Parker McKenna for helping to get the small groups, the input groups of the employees together, I appreciate that. And Kathy Luton for a lot of stuff, so. Everything else, so. And then for the board members, and I hope I haven't missed anybody. I probably have, that's the danger in trying to name people. But again, thank you for everyone's support to getting us to where we are at this point. With that said, we're going to go right into our strategic discussion, and we are back to a typical study session format. Last month, we had to condense these meetings, so I anticipate the majority of our time will be spent on this discussion. So with that said, Dr. Ritter.
At this time, we'd like to have Dr. Hackenworth along with Missy Riley come up and present to the board early childhood as well as parents as teachers information to kind of stimulate a conversation. And we're very excited about what we're going to share with you, so if you could.
My part's easy, I'm introducing Missy. So, we're excited tonight. Missy and I were just visiting, this is one of her first opportunities to kind of showcase some of the great things that we're doing with early childhood and parents as teachers. So this evening, we want to give you some, kind of a prime the pump for the discussion regarding some of our current programming, some of the initiatives that our community's currently involved in, and how SPS fits into some of those initiatives. So with that, I'll introduce Mrs. Missy Riley.
Hello, and thanks for having me. I really a heartfelt thanks. As Ben mentioned, this is my eighth year in this position, and this is the first time I've had the opportunity to share this presentation. I usually do my OSR on PAT, and then I'm part of the title, but we've gone in so many different directions now that I appreciate the opportunity to kind of tell you everything we've been doing. So, let's see, do I want to go here? Oops, I'll do it here. Eee, sorry. What did I do wrong? How do I get this to go away? Okay.
There you go.
That's good. Okay, so just for today's presentation, I'm going to talk about what our current programming is, the board requested data points, kind of a Wonder Years overview, where we fit into the Every Child Initiative, making early childhood education a priority for the district, and then what can SPS bring to the table. Starting with kind of what we know, just the overview of why early childhood is important. I know because we have a board who's been talking early childhood for many, many years that you probably know many of these things, but just to get it out there, we do know that about 90% of a human's brain development occurs before the age of five, that approximately 30% of next year's 2,200 kindergarteners are currently being served by one of our district programs of Wonder Years, Early Childhood Special Education, or our close partner of Head Start. Do want to mention here too that my presentation does not include Early Childhood Special Education. It's over in the special ed section, so it's not that I'm not including them, but they report to a different spoke. 20 to 25% of kindergarteners are not ready for kindergarten according to the Mayor's Commission for Children's Kindergarten Readiness Study. And the reason I said 20 to 25%, the first time we did that study in 2006, it was 25%. We had a lot of funding go towards some early childhood efforts between 2006 and 2010, and saw a little bit of an improvement in 2010. We're getting ready to, planning to redo that study in the fall of 2014, and we'll see where we end up. I'm predicting that our numbers are probably going to be back down to that 25% again because we've had a lot of cuts. So if we can say that the money that's tied to it and the funding that's tied to it leads us in that direction, we can probably anticipate that our teachers and parents are going to say again that we're down closer to 25%. And then, so what we know from that is about 20% of the entering kindergarteners will show up to the kindergarten door with no prior pre-K experience.
Quick question.
Yes.
Can you go back?
I can try. You've seen how proficient I am at that.
Okay, the, how does that 30% break down between Wonder Years, Early Childhood Special Education, and Head Start? Because my figure, that'd be about 660, or 660 kids total?
That's, I think that's about right. In Wonder Years, we're serving about 275. In Head Start, they're right under 400. And in ECSC, for the pre-K aged children, they're, I want to say, I just got their numbers the other day when I did this, they were at, I believe, 175. Is that about the right number?
It's going to be higher, 30%, but, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and just a little more background, but what we know, Perry Preschool Study, one of the longest running studies of preschoolers ever. The participants from this study are now approximately 50 years old. And what we have found from their life findings is all of the things that are on that left column, and then they're less likely to drop out of school, repeat a grade, be placed in special education, or have multiple arrests. And then this is kind of what our current funding looks like nationally compared to brain growth, that our public per pupil funding kind of runs along that bottom until age five or six, and our brain growth goes way up in the other direction. Okay, so our current programming, Title I Preschool. When I stepped into this position, they had just combined Title I Preschool and Parents as Teachers into one position, one supervisory position. And our mission that we have come up with with Title I is to provide an educational foundation while instilling a love of learning. That's been our mission for a long time. We keep going back and revisiting it, but we still feel like that tells pretty well what we're about. And then our vision's listed there also. Title I, we started with a Wonder Years program, which is children who are eligible one year prior to kindergarten, so they must turn four before August 1st, as opposed to five before August 1st for kindergarten entry. Their eligibility is based on most academically at risk. Those are the guidelines from the federal government for Title I funds for pre-K. And this past year, we do a little better job each year, and I've got a graph that'll show that later on, of identifying more and more students, and identifying more students each year that need our services. Last year, we served about, we screened 1,274, or this current year, we've screened about 1,274 of the approximately 2,200 children that will be eligible for kindergarten next year.
How do those children come to you for screening? How are those children identified?
In a variety of ways. We screen through parents as teachers. Each year with parents as teachers, we do about 6,000 screenings. That's where most of those are coming from, and I've got a slide that has those exact numbers coming up. And we do those in the home, we do those in private childcare settings, we do them in our center where parents can just call in for that too. And so about 1,274 of the approximately 2,200 age eligible cohorts, so those one year prior to kindergarten, this year were screened and considered for eligibility of approximately 300 spots. And what we've been using as success measures are moving the academically at risk, those below 50th percentile on a standardized assessment, to students that are on grade level, so those that are 50th percentile or above. And then what we're looking for is a cost savings, students entering kindergarten on grade level and not receiving other interventions later in a school career. And this is something that we've just started looking at, actually. Our hope is that we're going to try to keep them out of other services, whether it be special education or reading recovery or something else. Basically, our children that we're putting in Wonder Years are the lowest quartile. They're typically around 25th percentile and below, so we know that they are most academically at risk.
Are you tracking them as they move on through the higher grades?
We have just started doing that, yes. So there was no data prior to me being in this position, unfortunately. The program's been around for about 29 years, so we could have some really good data. And so our oldest cohort are fifth graders this year. And like I said, this is one of the most recent things we've been looking at, just kind of using that 50th percentile as our marker. And like I said, each year, we've done a little better job of identifying students that are below that 50th percentile. As recently, this year, we're right around that, I think 98% of our students started below a 50th percentile. And then those other two, the red is those that remain below 50th percentile. They may have started at a first percentile, so they may have still had quite a bit of gain, but they're still not quite to that 50th percentile that we're hoping that they get to. And then we've, like I said, answer to that question, these are what I'm calling third grade, end of year reading level cohorts. I was trying to make it as explanatory as possible, but basically, those students that are currently fifth graders that attended Wonder Years seven years ago, six years ago, seven years ago, that 54% of them were at or above grade level at the end of year, third grade, compared to 70.9% district wide. So that's the district average compared to the Wonder Years average. And remember that those were students that were all significantly below that 50th percentile beginning. And then 79% of those students were not receiving, did not receive reading recovery in first grade. So as I was talking about it as a cost saving measure, we could have assumed that probably most of that 25%, those students in that 25th percentile and below might have needed reading recovery, and 80% of them did not need that intervention.
I saw this chart, and I spent a long time trying to figure it out, so it didn't help me. But that, my question, it seems to be, I guess I don't know what these numbers tell me. That 54%, do we have, it seems like it's apples and oranges here. That we're just throwing out a number that Wonder Year kids are at 54% at or above grade level in the third grade year compared to 70% district wide. One way you can look at it is, well, they're far lagging the district in the year. But I just don't see how this shows the value of Wonder Years. And then the second question I have is not receiving reading recovery. Has that been broken down because reading recovery's not in all of our schools, correct?
Right.
And reading recovery is in some schools some years and not in schools other years?
Right.
So how does not receiving reading recovery, how does that number mean anything to us other than it being a number?
That's a great question. And basically, what I'm trying to establish right now is some markers for us at some point so we can determine if we're making improvements or not. Those hadn't been set up, and I hadn't been asked to provide a lot of markers to this point. So I'm trying to find some significance in some data. And so these are all just pieces of data. The actual data point that I was asked to provide was to compare students that had been in Wonder Years to students who hadn't had any other type of pre-K. And I don't have any way of doing that unless we want to start collecting that data right now with students this week as they're registering for kindergarten. So this is my attempt to take the data that we have and to try to present it in what was closest to what was being asked of me to present, and to try to make some sense of it.
Missy, what would be involved in adding the data points? As you're registering now, can you add that? Can you mark which ones have had reading recovery? Can we track all of those different factors? Is that a big deal? Is that a big load of gathering the data? Is it a software problem?
Yeah, we don't currently have a place to collect that data. So it would take a discussion to determine that on each of these students, we need to add a box to click off each of those things, to have an elementary secretary, when they come in, ask about pre-K. Sue George did it one year for us when she was on sabbatical. And it was a pretty in-depth amount of time and effort and data collection and data entry to get the little piece that we got.
I personally think it's an important thing to collect.
And we'll be happy to.
I don't know if anybody else does, but if we're going to.
Well, we would be asking whether they had pre-K? I mean, that'd be self-reported, right? You wouldn't know what.
What level, and, yeah. Unless, right. And that's kind of what we tried to ask that year, is what they had, where they were, was it full day? Was it half day? Like I said, it was a lot of data points, and then it took a person basically on sabbatical for a whole semester to be able to put that data together for us.
Wouldn't that be some data that we could use long-term with respect to providing data to parents to be able to evaluate where they send their kids?
Absolutely.
That before they get to kindergarten, if we've got data that says, these came from X school, these came from Y school, so that there could be some, I'll call it self-policing for no better, but from a market standpoint.
Right.
They can find out, kids went to this school, performed better as kindergarten readiness than other schools did.
And we've talked about that pre-K data collection at a city level also, and trying to figure out where children are before they enter kindergarten. At this point, we just don't really have a way to do that.
Can we do that without stepping into too much mud with respect to the quality rating that has been?
I don't know that answer. I think that would be an IT answer, probably.
Well, I mean, from the legislative, the political aspect of it.
Oh, from the political aspect of it, Dana Carroll's nodding her head. So if Dana says yes, then yes.
Okay, that's good for me.
I personally think we have to have this information if we're talking about moving ahead.
Right.
And how we spend our money.
Yes.
To me, that's crucial data that we need to have.
And I know that that's a conversation that we've had as members of that Every Child Promise conversation, is that we know we need to be tracking what we're doing.
Is that a software program that, where you input, the person taking the information, are they putting it into the computer at that time?
I don't think we're that far along to know exactly what the software would look like.
And that should be a priority, so they're not having to do data entry later?
Right.
So.
Right.
Am I the only one?
Well, I think it's important to capture it. I'm not sure we're up here today to figure out how it's going to get into the system. I mean, I think that if we feel that that's important data to have, it'd be good to have some people think about that beyond, you know.
And as we partner with the city initiative, I think it's important for us to have a voice.
And that might be something, you know, that might be something that is helpful through the Every Child Promise, you know, throughout the initiatives of the Every Child Promise, not just for what, just not kindergarten readiness, but other issues. So, you know, that may be something.
And I know Dana has a whole set of measuring points along the way for all five of the different subcommittees too, so we'll definitely be part of that conversation.
I just had the opportunity to have a quick conversation this week, because I was hanging out here so much with everything going on. But I do believe that within the Quality Improvement Accountability Department, they are looking at and do have a plan in place to collect some of this data with a new aspect of our Performance Series system. I mean, I don't want to say too much about it, because I just got a real quick overview of it's, it is going to do what we've been talking about. That is my understanding. There's more, I want to mention that.
I think there are really good things about what we're doing. We can figure out the metrics and the vehicles and what did, like, right now, there's shows really about.
Yeah. Right.
Okay, program number two, Younger Wonders, which we expanded into a few years ago, and these are students that are two years away from school, and these are definitely our most academically at risk. A much smaller number of children that have been screened at that age group that you can see, approximately 363, but we only had 24 spots there this year. We're hoping to look into expanding some opportunities there. Those children automatically qualify for a second year of Wonder Years, and we're seeing great things with them just in that year of gain from them being three to turning four. This is our first full year of doing the Younger Wonders program.
And again, the referrals would primarily come from their existing centers, you know, a teacher that identifies, I mean.
It could be, that's a fairly small number. Typically, private providers don't refer to our program. It's more of a parent educator that would refer to this program.
There's where the parent educators are really key.
Right.
And then on the measurement for these three and four-year-olds.
Mm-hmm.
It's difficult to measure three and four-year-olds. And are the academically at risk, on grade level, with a three-year-old?
Right.
How subjective is that? How do we have a tool that is robust enough or objective enough for the different teachers to evaluate the same child and come to the same results, or is it?
It's a standardized screening tool called the Dial 4 that's normed and norm-referenced, and so it's very objective. It's being done by our parent educators, so it's not being done by their classroom teachers. We're also adding a piece to our program. There's a new state-level pre-K assessment called the DRDP, Developmental Results, Desired Results Developmental Profile. And it will be an ongoing tool by the teachers that can be used both for formative and summative assessment. So we've kind of got two pieces that we'll be looking at there. Okay, Missouri Preschool Project, this is our brand-new program. It was actually just awarded to us in the fall. I wrote the grant for it in August, and it was awarded, I think, at the beginning of October. And we started our classroom in late January. And what we're doing here is we're partnering with a private provider. The private provider provides space, the assistant teacher and food services, and we provide the lead teacher professional development and supplies and materials all through the grant. And it's a renewable grant. It can be renewed for up to five years with a decreasing amount of funding each year. That's, can be up to 20 students in the classroom with a lead teacher and an assistant teacher.
So there's only, there's only the possibility of renewing it? It's basically just one classroom?
It's one classroom. We do have the opportunity, and I believe Dr. Ritter just gave his okay to apply for a second classroom and to look into doing that. So we would have potentially a second year of our first grant and a first year of our second grant to look forward to next year.
And we'd be looking for an additional private provider to partner with?
Correct. And the idea there is to increase the quality of their entire program by bringing their teachers along for a lot of our professional development that we're doing, and doing a lot of community professional development along the way. This is one of the pilots that's mentioned in the Every Child Promise, too.
But also being able to utilize space that's not ours, which seems to be a challenge that we have right now.
And the private provider's able to collect tuition to help offset their costs for all of the things that I mentioned also. So it should be a good win-win.
So the only difference here is that this is not a Title I.
Correct.
I mean, the actual, what the school looks like and does on a daily basis is not going to differ from the Wonder Years classroom.
The teacher should be very similar. We're using the same curriculum, a lot of the same principles. Actually, the teacher that's in our classroom now had been a paraprofessional for us for Wonder Years, and so she's very familiar with our philosophy and how we do things at Wonder Years. They also don't have to be qualified by being academically at risk. And so it can be any child. We actually had to look for an underutilized area of spaces in a section of the city. And so it's currently located in the southwest part of town. Our fourth program is our Head Start co-qualifying classroom. Again, very similar to a Wonder Years classroom, but because of lack of space, because of lack of resources. Kimberly, who's the director of OCAC Head Start, and I, when we both had big funding cuts a couple of years ago, decided to get together to talk about how we could combine efforts and make a win-win out of that. And so that is a multi-aged classroom, three, four, and five-year-olds, either one or two years prior to kindergarten. And we use both Head Start and Title I criteria, they overlap nicely. And our first classroom, we targeted specifically for homeless, students that meet homeless guidelines. And so one classroom is entirely students that qualify for homeless. And again, Title I provides the SPS teacher and professional development as appropriate. Head Start provides facility, assistant teacher, transportation, and some meals. So same success criteria is what we're looking for there. And our good news there is that we were about two weeks ago identified as the 2014 Outstanding Missouri Head Start Collaboration for the State of Missouri. And then we, this is also one of our blue ribbons in the Springfield Community Focus Report this year too. So we're proud of that collaboration. It's bumpy, it's hard collaborating, having, going in with somebody with different ideas, but Kimberly and I especially work really well together philosophically. We're very close in what we want to provide, and so it's worked out well.
I'm assuming these programs will collect data as we go along to make sure that we can drill down to all these programs and figure out what's working, what's not working.
We're collecting very similar data for each of those classrooms. As soon as we decide exactly what data that is that we want to collect and where we want to keep it, then that's what we'll be collecting for all of them.
Would Head Start have the, I don't know what their space limitation is, but if this proves to be a successful model, is there room to replicate that throughout the Head Start system?
And we did replicate it this year, we added a second classroom this year, and we're in talks about how we can collaborate more, because Head Start did just receive some additional funding. One of their obstacles is paying a living wage. And so the more we can partner here, that helps them overcome that obstacle. One of our biggest obstacles is the space to provide, and so it works out well for both programs. And then finally, Parents as Teachers, the personal visit component of that. Last year, we served 2,085 families, 3,066 children with 6,440 visits. And then these are our partners that we have that we are providing what I called essential services to, meaning not just that we refer to them, but that we're actually doing some type of a home, or of a home visit on behalf of them, or they're, we're working with them, that they have someone trained that's delivering our services on all different levels there. But those are some of our partners that we have. And then our screening services, that was my number that I, or that slide that I referred to earlier. Close to 5,800 screenings last year, and there's the breakdown between six months to three years, and then three years to kindergarten. And then from those referrals, or from the screenings, we make referrals to each of these different agencies. And many of these agencies, First Steps, Early Childhood Special Education, Title I Programs, Missouri Preschool Project, that's pretty much how probably 90% of their referrals come in. Okay, so there's that data, the data point question number one. Here has what Wonder Years done historically. I was going by percentile gain from one year to the next on that dial, and our eight-year average is 36.3 percentile gain on that. Our average at the beginning of the year for all eight years was 29th percentile. Our average for end of the year, 65.3 percentile. So if I'm a kindergarten teacher receiving those kids, I'm thrilled if they come in at that 65 percentile. As Brian mentioned in his report a month ago, two months ago, our effect size was a .802, which tells us that that's the equivalent of approximately two years of growth for those students that have been in Wonder Years. And then our third grade reading levels for the two student cohorts show 77% are reading at or above. And I think we forgot to change that slide. You got an email correction on that today. Okay. And then, one of the, the next question was SPS's role in Every Child Promise. I've talked a lot about, quite a bit of that. And early childhood education addressed in both Every Child Plan and the City Strategic Plan with a great deal of overlap. I have a little cohort of friends, Denise Bradfelt from Mayor's Commission, and Dana Carroll, and Kimberly Shen Brown, and the four of us talk probably four to five times per week at a minimum. I spent three or four hours with them today. So we don't do much without consulting each other on what's going on citywide. We're really, and that's what people seem to be amazed about when they come into our community, is how well we do play together. And supporting PAT, creating a voluntary universal pre-K. I've listed off a bunch of the things that have come up in both of those reports. I'm really pushing my 20 minutes here.
Oh, don't worry.
So I'm trying to buzz through, okay. Data point number two. Data point number two, SPS's role in Every Child Promise, again, we are a major partner, a player, as I've mentioned, and as I've talked about some of our other collaborations, along with Head Start, Mayor's Commission for Children. Out-of-the-box thinking to leverage resources, which I've alluded to in some of those things, that becomes more and more prevalent every time we talk about, well, this is what we'd like to do, where would we like to do it? I found a thing on Facebook today about having a bus that travels the city for pre-K. It's not out of the realm of thinking. And kind of a gatekeeper for the process, starting with the prenatal and birth, that's where I think PAT's role is so very essential, not only providing and empowering parents with that information that they need to make sure that their students are successful, but also just making sure we have as many students as possible on our radar, so we're getting the correct students into services as they're needed. And then hopefully, we're going to keep that as a voluntary services for all. So we're not saying that this is not social engineering, this is just, we want to have something available for everyone at all different levels depending on different family needs. And then current offerings and funding, I've covered a lot of this, but this is where things are funded. Title I is all federal, Head Start co-qualifying is federal, both Title I and Head Start. We're also doing a collaboration through Parents as Teachers with Early Head Start at Studio Alternative School, in their nursery there, where all of their families have to be enrolled in PAT in order to receive nursery services. MPP is a state DESI grant, when the governor talks about giving money to pre-K, he's talking about MPP. One of our hangups of providing, not only is it space, but it has to be licensed space, we don't currently have any licensable space in Springfield Public Schools. So that's another challenge if we want to move forward looking for additional funding for pre-K, that's basically they're begging school districts to take, is that we need to look at places where we can find licensable space.
What is licensable?
Childcare guidelines have a licensing body, and they go into a space and tell you how much square footage you have to have per child, what sprinkler systems have to look like, fire codes, there, it's a higher level of basically safety and security and space for children. And the Parents as Teachers is DESI funding and Local Board of Education funding, currently about a 40% DESI and 60% Board of Education. And I was asked the question if we were to fully implement Parents as Teachers, what that would cost, and we're currently funded at about $1.2 million, full implementation, by doubling the number of our parent educators would be an additional $1 million. And that would double the number of families that were served in the program. Okay, and then I was asked, still on that, prioritizing early childhood, those are all, I think, pretty self-explanatory, including early childhood education and the Board of Education Strategic Plan, aligning all of our services and programs as we go out and look for those additional partnerships. It gets a little more and more out there, and making sure that that's all under one umbrella and that we're all moving in the same direction. Finding workable options so that early childhood classes are not so volatile to location changes. Every year with Wonder Years, we have to change locations, makes my teachers really nervous, makes them really anxious, starting about now. And so they'll be wondering about where they are, and then we've also lost the ability, we'd had as many as 24 classrooms in the district, and we're down to 16 in the district right now.
Because of space?
Because of space. Work with elementary schools to be the neighborhood pub, pub, not pubs.
I don't know what you mean, you know what you mean?
Not at all what we're doing, I promise, but to be the place we're feeling, to hang out, and to find out what's going on in their neighborhood and where they're very comfortable being part of that neighborhood hub. And help create a funding mechanism for the community, possibly being a part of that through the Every Child Promise, and then gradually shift remediation dollars into early childhood. I'm almost done, I think this is the last one. And then SPS is placed at the table in the Every Child Promise, I've talked about that a lot, quite a bit already, and partly already answered that. Willingness to partner, the public school approach to child development and K readiness, and finding that balance by honoring private providers and what they do, but also saying this is what we expect for kindergarten readiness. Identify and share best practices in community trainings, there's not a real direct concerted effort for that right now. And then identify and share funding opportunities, encourage a professional learning community with all community providers, and participate in the kindergarten readiness baseline study every other year, is the recommendation of Every Child, Every Child Promise now instead of every fourth year. Oh, I told you it was the last one, and it wasn't.
That's okay.
And really redesign Parents as Teachers to act as that gatekeeper in the process, we're, we want to eliminate as much as possible. I've even talked about making it a competition for my parent educators to go out there and comb the neighborhoods, so we don't have those what I call doorstep kindergarteners, those that show up on the first day of kindergarten, never having been on anyone's radar, never having been anywhere or accessed any of our programs. As a giant referral agency to all EC resources and opportunities, screened by three becomes a community norm or expectation. Kindergarten readiness awareness, as defined by SPS kindergarten teachers I mentioned, too, and a K transition from all settings, and really making that an effort, we do, you know, the transition from fifth grade to sixth grade, and from eighth grade to ninth grade, to make sure that that's an expectation, that we're transitioning all kids from pre-K to K also. And then holding parent engagement meetings and helping parents navigate the kindergarten readiness expectations.
What would be the limitation of being able to screen all kids by age three?
There is none, other than just getting the word out and making that an expectation of the community.
I'd just like to commend Mrs. Riley about the collaboration she's done over at least a decade to work with Head Start and with Dana Carroll from Community Partnership, you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
I'm sure we're going to have some questions here, and then probably some direction in terms of where the board, you know, based on the information, maybe some additional, maybe direction or information. But one of the things I would like to know, and I don't expect you to have it now, but I'd like to know how much we kind of, or we quote "save" when we have a combined room with a private provider or Head Start? Because I really see that as the future, at least until we, you know, it's probably the best way versus, you know, dedicating and going in and renovating and spending a lot of money to renovate space to already use the space that's out there. So I'd be interested in having some information on that. And then the other thing, do private providers ever require enrollment in Parents as Teachers as part of their enrollment guidelines? And is there a way that we might work, you know, through the Every Child Promise and the real focus on that right now? It seems to me that if we can get our parent educators to those children, they have the skills and the background to really, you know, identify and work there, but I think sometimes, and I know that it's not the, it's oftentimes not the children and private providers that aren't the ones that.
And we're, that's part of our conversation that I refer to, that we have all the time, of how can we make all of our programs work together and maximize the money that's out there? And, you know, you've got to have some type of a carrot. With Dana's plan, there is a little bit of a carrot for tuition reimbursement, and part of what we're planning to tie to that is involvement in Parents as Teachers and family engagement, and so you're absolutely on track with what we've been talking about.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Yeah, Andy?
The, one of your slides talks about the fact that 1,274 of approximately 2,200 age-eligible cohorts were screened. So that means 1,000 were not screened.
Correct.
Do we have any data or any evidence to tell us who those 1,000 students are and what their level of need may be?
Not at this point, we don't. And the only way, just off the top of my head, that I can think of doing that is identifying them as kindergartners, going back to look and see if they were screened at age four, once again, very.
I guess my question is, and maybe it's just kind of a gut-level reaction at this point in time, since we don't have the data, but are we looking at not screening 1,000 kids that really need to be screened, or are we not screening 1,000 kids that probably don't need to be screened?
Proportionately, it seems like we're right on track. I mean, we, anytime I look at the numbers and I use that, look at the fact that it's a percentile score that we get, it, anything that I look at pretty well falls into those percentiles. So of those 1,200 students that were screened, almost always 600 of them are below 50th percentile.
Okay, so, and then the assumption is of the 1,000 that weren't screening, another 500 are going to be below?
Right, correct.
Second question, we're screening these kids, 1,200 kids, for 300 spots. Of those 1,200 kids, how many need Wonder Years?
Well, if we're looking at 50th percentile as a cutoff, then about 600 of them need that.
Because, you know, we've talked about this, not every kid needs pre-K education.
Correct.
No magic formula, you know, and getting your kid ready for kindergarten, it's not something they have to, you know, take certain tests to get into kindergarten. But there are certain ones that do need it. So I guess my, one of my concerns is that we're already, you know, we're not providing services to 300 kids every year that we know need it, A, and we're not providing services to another 500 kids that probably need it, B.
Right.
So that's 800 kids out there every year that, half of whom we know need services, and half of them we assume need services, that we're not providing services to.
And ECSE and Head Start are picking up part of that slack, too.
And that's assuming, yeah, I was going to say, that's assuming that everybody we screen either enrolls in Wonder Years or doesn't enroll anywhere, and that would be
Correct.
incorrect either, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, they, if they don't qualify for Wonder Years, oftentimes they're going back to a private provider.
And that's where we're going, where we go back to the Every Child Promise, is that we're really trying to get our arms around what all is out there, and who all is enrolled in what's out there, and then helping to define what quality looks like.
And then the final thing, and it's a comment, that, you know, I think we've talked about this before, and it's on one of your slides, but what we know, current funding. If you go back to that slide, well, maybe you can't go back to that slide.
Challenge.
But it's interesting, you talk about brain growth and aging years, and we're talking four- and five-year-olds, and if you go up and look at four- and five-year-olds, how much of their brain growth has occurred by the time they're four years old, and we're looking at 90% of it right at. So, you know, I get back to this idea that if we're not more intentional at zero to two, then four and five ain't going to cut it.
Right.
Because if you look at the figures you provided as three, heck, you go to two. Two's you're at 80%. You know, so you're, if we're not being more intentional, and that, where, again, goes back to me, is Parents as Teachers, and somebody getting that first hands-on contact, hopefully at the doctor's offices, so that this is a.
Hospital.
A seamless transition from pregnancy to kindergartner.
Correct.
To kindergarten.
Because then all of a sudden.
Actually, pre-burke is probably.
Right.
Pregnancy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then that's where our other pre-K programs become the intervention, if we're not catching them before that brain growth has occurred.
Right, so I mean, I, you know, again, we've had this discussion about, you know, where does our responsibility end or begin? We're a K-12 school, and we have limited money, but you look at this research and this data, and you see what's happening and how much we're not going to have any impact on when they turn two.
Andy, one of the best practices, and Mrs. Riley can address it, is the visiting, is it visiting nurse that goes in prenatally and follows them through about age two? And is it Jordan Valley or Burl has a small program that does that? But I think Mayor's Commission's talking a little bit about how that can be expanded to get into the homes prior to birth and do that gap, work with them parenting skills, and talking about nutrition and those kind of things.
And possibly even hand off to Parents as Teachers at that point, too, because visiting nurses is about three times as expensive as Parents as Teachers, too.
But it's been proven to be very effective also.
Very effective, absolutely.
So there's another piece with the medical community or mental health community.
And the final point I'll make is, and I've discussed this before, Center City School District, I think I've given some information before.
Apartment, yeah.
And I don't know if that program's been looked at, you know, they have a wraparound program, and it goes into the doctor's offices and provides information, and there's a lot of materials they prepared and are willing to, you know, hand out, but I mean, it's, it was an interesting pro, seminar that kind of addressed that idea of how you get that information to the pediatrician's offices and to the OB-GYN, and then how you hand that off to, and as a school and as a private, and it was a.
And we have three pediatricians on the Mayor's Commission right now that have seen the importance and have said, we'll work with the, we've been very tentative, though, I mean, honestly, from Parents as Teachers with our uncertainty of funding, of what we should be advertising that we should be doing, and kind of had almost an identity crisis, too, within the past four to five years, of who are we, who should we be serving? Are we trying to be a universal program? Do we need to be targeted? Ideally for me, I think I talked about this in my OSR, if being a program within a program, so having a very targeted program within a more universal program.
Well, I guess I would ask, you know, it says it would be $1 million to fully fund it. Is that the best place for us to put $1 million when it comes to early childhood? I mean, I'm probably putting you on the spot, but, I mean, I guess that that's a question that I would.
Dr. Ritter's been asking me that for about seven years, and I tell him that it's kind of a Sophie's Choice-type scenario in that case, that I don't think, and we can, and it also goes back, like, to the reading recovery argument, too. You can't really do away with reading recovery because we're going to have kids that we miss in pre-K. You can't do away with pre-K because we're going to have kids that we miss in PAT. If we truly had everyone on board in that program where it's universal, and it's what our entire city was doing, I think we'd see a highly decreased number of needing to use public funding for those pre-K services if we were doing a good job of educating parents from prenatal on.
Yeah, and I guess my question is, how confident are we, if we commit, because I think there's interest on the board to visit that possibility, how confident are we that in providing those resources, we are going to get to those?
So you're asking for a guarantee right here?
No, not guarantee, but I just, you know, it seems like it's those hard-to-get-to populations.
Right.
And I have yet to hear, even from the Mayor's, or even from the Every Child Promise initiative, what are some strategies to get to that population that nobody has gotten to yet? So I would say.
And I've had the same question, I've asked Missy that same question about where's the best place to put the money in? I guess the conclusion I came to is, you know, every level is, if success is kind of predicated on the one before it. And if you've got a really bad foundation from birth three, it's really difficult in pre-K. And if you've got pre-K that's not very good, it's really difficult in K through three to build on that foundation as they move through this transition point of schools. And I'm going back to the point of that's the best dollar we can spend as Parents as Teachers, from our standpoint, to contribute to this whole early childhood effort? Because I think if you don't have that foundation, you know, you can have the best school system in K through three, and if you don't have a foundation for it, you're not going to be as successful. I mean, and vice versa, if you've got a great preschool and you've got a lousy school system, you lose everything that you built up to that point, to some degree. But I think part of it is the whole, you mentioned the marketing side of it. I think historically, we've been very tentative to really go after it, and I don't know what the strategies are, I have no idea what the right strategies to do that, but I hope through, you know, Every Child Promise, through us, through Mayor's Commission, through P-20 Council, that we can put some kind of marketing awareness out there to where it needs to be to get those kids that need it to be in this program, and not be afraid that we maybe only conserve 1,000, so we don't want to market it so much, we might get 1,500, well, I don't care about that. If we got 2,000 kids that need it, then we need to fund it, to fund 2,000 kids. And you do the marketing and we do the resources, because that means there's a demand out there, you know? And so I guess I'm a big believer in we need to be getting to these kids, getting to these parents, getting that information, and let the chips fall with respect to the demand, and then fund accordingly. That's really easy to say, from the standpoint of now I'm putting a monkey on your back, define a million dollars worth of resources of staffing to do that. And, but I feel real good that you can do that to make that happen. And so, you know, I would hope that we wouldn't be fearful that we're going to create a demand And so, you know, I, I would hope that we wouldn't be fearful that we're gonna create a demand out there because we market it and awareness. I hope that happens, because that drives the program, and, and, and get the support to do that. So, that's a comment on that, but I got
I don't see that as a problem. You had twenty-six classes, how long ago, and now you have a fraction of those.
Right.
There was a demand. We haven't been able to meet the demand.
I'm talking about parents as teachers. That's what I'm trying to
Yeah.
Oh, parents as teachers. But you had, I'm sorry, you had how many parents as teachers?
Well, but we had almost, we were serving almost twice as many families when we were funding them there.
And I don't think
Yeah, but I think the question is, is, was it, was it those families that are? I, I guess my question is, were we serving those families of the children that we know are still coming to us unprepared?
Yes, our, our data that we collect says yes, we were.
Okay, that's what I want to hear.
It's very in line with what our district demographics look like, the demographics of the families and parents as teachers.
And working with WIC has brought in
Yes.
some families that you would not have been at all.
For three years, we had two parent educators that were at WIC a hundred percent of the time, and were bringing families in as referrals, doing visits at WIC initially, because we made the assumption that there were families who would access parents as teachers if, but they aren't, weren't comfortable doing that in their home, and so they would just catch them between appointments as they were waiting for appointments, and then eventually they would build that rapport and then go ahead and enroll where they could be seen in the home too. So, we, we've, we see that the demographics are very similar.
Okay, that, that's the kind of data I feel like I need to make those kinds of comments. Any other questions?
No, I'm happy. Yeah, go ahead. You, I had two questions down on the same slide. It, that talks about MPP grant that we could be, that could qualify for. Is that, when you said licensable space, was that, we don't have any available licensable space? Or we don't have space that's, can meet the license requirements in the school system?
Both, right?
Well, I mean, I know we don't have any available, I know there's no open space
Right.
that's there that either meets it or not meets it.
Right.
I understand that. But are there spaces, does our classrooms meet, could be licensable?
No.
Not without significant, significant expense?
Not without some retrofitting. I, I had someone in just come in and just really guesstimate what shady dell would cost to be licensable, and it was around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because of sprinkler systems, because of putting sinks in every classroom, because of retrofitting toilets, and the number of toilets that you need.
Same with like a Sherwood?
Correct.
Would, you'd have to go in and, to make it licensable?
Right.
Okay.
But as soon as it's licensable, then we can go out and seek that state money and
I know a lot of schools use that
Yeah.
and, and use it. The second question I had was, the, the PAT funding, you said sixty percent of that million too is SE and forty percent?
The other way around.
Okay, the other way around. All right, I wrote down wrong. So, but the million dollars that we're talking about additional to get fully staffed, fully funded, whatever that term is. One, how many people are we talking about, or that resources? And that's, would basically be all local funding
Correct.
for the million dollars?
Right.
Okay.
And the, the governor has, I think, a million-dollar increase in his budget for parents as teachers, which split over five hundred and twenty districts is not very much. So that wouldn't be a big increase to
And I'm not confident of the forty percent we get now.
Yeah.
That I need to worry about it, because I don't have a lot of confidence that, that continues. But I could be wrong. But basically that doubled, we have twenty parent educators now.
Twenty parent educators now.
So that would double it?
That would take us to
Basically double it.
Yeah. Approximately forty.
And that would be, you would consider that fully
I, with that, we would have a parent educator for each elementary school in those elementary hubs, and we then would have a couple extra educators that could serve like at the WIC clinic or in other partnership-type areas.
All right, so, go ahead.
I just had a couple of things. First of all, the, uh, school sites that, that are not getting the parents as teachers or the preschool kids are pretty concentrated. We have some kindergartens that have no preschool in some of our schools, so I want to point that out. Number two
Wait, say that again.
What I'm saying is, we have some kindergarten classrooms that have no kids in it, that were, that experience preschool or parents as teachers.
So we would know that that could be a real targeted area, yeah.
Oh yeah, we, we could do that right now. Number two, Ruby Payne made it very clear, and anybody that heard us speak, we could do all we want with the early childhood, could do all we want with, with the parents as teachers. If we don't focus and bring their parents to the table and have a conversation, include them, that's your marketing. They have to own this, and when that happens, you're gonna, you're gonna see a major increase. So parents need to be brought to the table and have a conversation, and realize that they're in charge of their child's education, and we're here to help them. So I think that's a factor that needs to be part of this conversation overall, so. Anyway, that's all. Thanks.
So just to sum it up, I, I heard an interest in being able to capture on our kindergarten registration in some way what kind of pre-K or early childhood education a child had had, well, if they'd had it, and if it was possible, what it was, right? So that was part of our discussion.
And what to do with it after we gather that information too.
How will that, how will that formulate what we do, or form what we do? And then, an interest in knowing kind of the breakdown, and it can be percentage-wise, of how much a combined classroom saves us. And then, any, anything else going forth?
And this may be more rhetorical than, because I, I don't know that we can do this, but a million dollars does not sound like very much, when I think the amount of remediation and intervention that we spend every year to get kids to where they are is probably mind-boggling if we really sat down and added them all up. And I'm not asking you to do that, but all the stuff we've talked about from intervention and remediation, if you could take a million dollars and save all of that, and that's, I'm not gonna quote numbers, but you know what the return is, that's where you find your money. That's how, that's how you spend it, you don't find new money. The money's there, it's just reallocated because the program has done what it's supposed to do, and
But, go ahead, Annie.
I just, I just want to reiterate, at least from my point of view, we can talk of parents as teachers, and I believe it needs to be fully funded. But let's not forget the wonder years program, and the other elements that go into that, and a very successful program. So I don't want us to think that once we've fully funded parents as teachers, which I hope happens, but that we have other early childhood issues to look at also.
Right, triaging, I think, is probably where we are. Okay, anything else from down here?
Thank you, guys.
Good discussion, great presentation.
Thank you so much for your time too. I do truly appreciate it. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that I've got staff members here too. Kristy Davis is our instructional coach for wonder years. Carla Godfrey's our lead parent educator and lead screener, if you guys will stand. And then Brian Hubbard's kind of my sidekick with Title One. And then I mentioned Dana and Denise earlier, Dana from Every Child Promise, and Denise Redfield from Mayor's Commission. So that's kind of my posse that helps me figure out everything that I do.
Yeah, we appreciate all you do.
That's the ones they take to the pub.
Yeah, the pub, yeah. Okay, thanks so much. Uh, learning on, uh, moving on to the learning model. Mrs. Moore.
Ms. Morris.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Ritter. It's been a while since we've updated you on where we are with the learning model. So we wanted to come before you and kind of share some of the exciting updates that have happened since we last met. Some exciting things are happening in the state of Missouri. In December of this past year, Jay Nixon brought together a group of districts that were committed to continuous improvement, specifically with that Baldridge Initiative. And so there have been lots of conversations recently about where we are and where we hope to go. One of the things that attracted me to the Springfield area is that rich history starting in two thousand and five with continuous improvement, and no matter how many good things there are here in the district, that focus is always on looking down the road and thinking about what we can do better. And so one of the things that happened over time is that initial push with continuous improvement, or as we called it here in this district, continuous quality improvement, became more focused on creating those kinds of graduates that we wanted in the Springfield community. And so the learning community came together with that heritage of continuous improvement, but with an eye on where students were going to need to be to be equipped for post-secondary life. And our vision of continuous improvement intersected with that idea of twenty-first century learning. And that became visible with the learning model that was adopted in two thousand and nine. I think one of the things that we found as we've started implementing the learning model, that is, is that it created a lot of questions for people. So are we doing continuous improvement? Are we doing the learning model? And we see it, whoops, kind of as one movement and one direction that hopefully takes the best components of all of those pieces, and embeds them in a system that we can get behind here in Springfield Public Schools. And so if we think about the strategic plan guiding all of that work, and we think about leadership in the district and the board leadership, listening to stakeholders, determining what it is they need, crafting goals and measures, and then the learning model becomes how, and the way that we work to make all of those things become important. And so we wanted to share with you some of the work that's happening in the district to make that happen. Cue video, please work.
I am a critical thinker.
I am curious.
I'm creative.
I'm a motivator.
I am a difference maker.
In our department, our core goal is to provide safe, dry, healthy learning and working environments. And in order to do that, all of our staff have to collaborate and critically think and tap into each other's strengths. So the learning model is perfectly suited for what we do in building services.
My staff really enjoys the participation, using the ability to collaborate and problem solve. Because when you collaborate, you have ownership of the issues.
We use the learning model for our strategic planning within the Ad Blood and Act, which is a program. It allows us to collaborate with our shareholders, our booster clubs, our sites, and then also being able to work together with our departments within the Springfield Public Schools.
My department enjoys using the model to spark our creative thinking. And it also grounds us, for example, one time we were in meeting, and one of my colleagues pointed to the wall and said, how does this relate to the wonder model? And we had a copy of it there. And it was interesting, it was to spark a whole creative discussion we wouldn't have had in that not good case.
In the transportation department, the learning model is a tool that we use to continually improve.
The real power of the learning model is when department leaders give their staff permission to write on the model and really break it down to represent what they do on a daily basis. What staff can own that model and it represents what they do, it isn't just another thing we do at SPS.
I am creative.
I am a critical thinker.
I am curious.
I am a difference maker.
And so it's our hope that I can stop the video and get back to the PowerPoint, that the model becomes the way that we really do our work. And you heard Mrs. Krause talk about the different departments personalizing it, and we noticed, starting about a year and a half ago with the District Assessment Committee, that we just had small groups write, how does district assessment fit in the learning model? And just a big barrier broken when people took pens and actually marked on what seemed to be something flat and on the wall. And that sparked other conversations, and we were really excited to see the way that continuous improvement energy took off. And literally, the different departments and divisions, the different classrooms have, have personalized their learning model. And I, in a very short time period, I'm just gonna give you a whirlwind tour of what some of the different departments and divisions across our district have done by thinking about what is the core of their work in the district, and how they use those processes, and how they use critical thinking, communication, and collaboration to really make that come alive. And of course, I think because the core of our work is centered around that rigorous and relevant curriculum, it's especially exciting when you see a classroom teacher who has personalized and mashed that Plan Do Study Act process with the learning model, and, and it speaks to that really high level of integration and that really high level of personalization with the work that we do. We're also really blessed because we've expanded the learning model steering team that initially was largely made up of Ed Services personnel, to a cross-functional team across the district. And we've tried to provide you some updates along the way, but one of the most exciting things that's come out of the collaboration are the different action plans and different components that have embedded the learning model language in the authentic work that we do. Mr. McKenna will be coming forward in April talking more about the recognition process, but we've highlighted it just briefly here to let you see that now, as we recognize staff employees, we'll be doing that with that learning model criteria. And so originally, we started with just a, an electronic format, but we found that some of our staff don't always have access to a, a computer during their work hours. And so the good old-fashioned drop it in the, the slot allows us to personalize for the different work features that the different folks in our district have. So we're really working to try to make this something that is just not a flat diagram on the wall, but really expresses the way we do our work. One of the pieces that has helped us be very successful and expand our reach, we think, started with our purchase of the Canvas Learning Management System about two years ago with the budget process. And we originally purchased this learning management system as a vehicle to be able to deliver high school classes. In a district that believes in continuous improvement, we know that technology is a tool that we have to leverage to make these things work even better, especially for the students that we are going to be serving. And so now I'm gonna turn the program over to Dr. Hagerman, who'll tell you a little bit more about that learning management system.
So while our initial plans for Canvas were relatively small in scope, we quickly learned through feedback and collaboration that Canvas could completely electrify the way that we learn and work in SPS. It has allowed us to change the way we work and learn in very, very quick speed. Canvas was purchased for these online courses, and our enrollments are growing very, very quickly, as you see our enrollments for next year that don't yet include summer school registration that happens in April. And we're very excited about what Canvas could do in these online courses, but we started hearing from teachers, if Canvas is such a great tool in these online courses, then why can't we use them in our seated courses as well? So these schools and more every day are being supported as they learn Canvas and how to push it into their seated courses with students. One example is the Hillcrest Business Department, who wanted to push online elements into their seated courses, but wondered why they would start from scratch when there's already a personal finance course in SPS Online, that's fantastic. So they started looking at finding the best elements from that course and pushing those materials into their seated course so that more students could benefit than just the, the students enrolled in the SPS Online version. Another example is Project Lead the Way courses at Kickapoo in Glendale. Scott Dunn at Kickapoo has an emphasis in architecture, while Andy Reagan, Reagan at Glendale has an emphasis in biomedical. These two teachers have collaborated and joined their courses in the Canvas learning platform so that all of the students can benefit from the expertise of both teachers. So when things start to go really well in buildings and it benefits students, principals start to wonder, well, how could I use this to improve communication and collaboration at my site? And we've worked with all of these schools and more to start that process. Building principals and leadership teams and teachers are finding Canvas to be a very user-friendly way to improve the communication and collaboration at their sites. At Cowden Elementary, Shereen Norman, the principal, has collaborated with her staff on Canvas to implement the program Leader in Me. Her leadership team gathers teacher feedback using Canvas, and while Mrs. Norman is out in the building, she takes pictures of some of the best practices that she sees in her building, and then posts them on discussion boards for teachers to have conversation about how these innovative ideas could be taken to scale across the entire building. Carrie Bruce, a Title One coach at Holland Elementary, has moved the building's Title One data charts off of the cinder block walls and onto Canvas where all teachers can see the ideas and collaborate around the improvements that can come from it. So everything that buildings get, departments want. So we started trying to figure out how Canvas could support communication So we started trying to figure out how Canvas could support communication and collaboration within and among departments as well. We are finding that many departments are finding Canvas to be a very user-friendly way to manage both their meetings and their learning. Canvas is used across both elementary and secondary operations. The teams collaborate with all departments across the district to create meetings that include flipped topics and ongoing discussion boards that allow the collaboration and communication that happens in principals' meetings to extend well beyond the actual seated hours in those meetings. So one thing that we're finding in both building and department projects is that using Canvas increases the opportunities that we have to communicate across our large system. And then we started hearing a new question. If Canvas can be used so easily to communicate and collaborate, then how could it help us improve the access that we can provide teachers for resources? What you're seeing is a screenshot of what the typical teacher sees when they open their curriculum guides. You can see a list of files and folders mostly labeled with numbers and letters. And if you're lucky, you remember exactly what unit you need and get it right the first time. And if not, you close it and try another one and close it and try another one until you happen upon what you needed in the first place. Using Canvas to improve the way our teachers access their resources helps them get all the resources at their fingertips in a searchable and user-friendly environment. So if we can improve access to resources for teachers, people started wondering, "How could we improve access to resources for students?" For many, many years, we've purchased online resources for students that can be used both at school and at home. And it's really easy to use them at home as long as you know which website to go to, you know which resource you need, and each one of the resources has a different login and password. And so you need to make sure that you have all of those different logins and passwords committed to memory so that when you're at home, you can find it. And as you can imagine, it just really doesn't happen very often, and we can see it in our usage statistics. But we know these resources are what students need to be able to support their learning at home and at school. And so we've created the SPS Online or SPS Virtual Library that allows a single authentication into Canvas for students and teachers to have direct access to district purchase resources that support their learning at home on any device, including a telephone. We've listened and we've improved to answer all these questions in one year's time. Change can happen quickly. We're excited to see where this spark leads us to next. Our challenge is to keep listening for ways that we can support teachers to make their work easier as they prepare students for their future, and then follow that listening with very quick action.
So we started this presentation talking about continuous improvement. And I think one of the things that I've had the opportunity to do in the course of my career is see what a continuous improvement system looks like in a lot of different places. And I've visited places that could nail the Baldridge language cold and could talk about Cat 5 and Cat 6 and could talk about process maps and had literally flow charted their whole district. But I think the real proof in the pudding is about the core of the work that we do every day and what is going to be the impact of those continuous improvement efforts on students. And so what I'm especially proud of, of the Springfield Public Schools approach, is that when we implemented that learning model and we connected it to continuous improvement, we were serious about making it successful. And we knew that the difference between success and a near hit was the difference between what we would say we would do and what we will really do. And so I'm really proud of the way that we operationalized that communication, collaboration, and critical thinking with action across the system and the difference that it's made. And so what I'm going to suggest today is that there's not much that we can't do for kids with that continuous improvement approach and the learning model as our guide.
And I guess my first question is, if sites can have it and departments can have it, can the board have it?
Absolutely. And you could collaborate in that environment. We'd probably have to check sunshine laws.
Yeah, check sunshine law. Public conversation.
Pesky sunshine laws.
Well, I just, it might be helpful during a summer retreat to talk about, you know, what it does and just have a little bit more of a conversation and have some conversation about that, not decision-making, but you know, just information sharing.
As a place to share information.
And then I guess the other thing I would just say before we open it up is I think we need a learning model in the boardroom.
Okay, we'll make sure that that happens.
I looked around and
That's right, it's a good point.
So I think that that would be an important thing to have, to be able... I don't think it's behind those screens.
No.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Well, I just, you know, we've thrown around the word, you know, "Learning is personal." We've thrown that around a lot. And honestly, this is probably the first time I've seen where this really defines kind of what learning is personal. And I think the one thing that I took from what you said was, really doesn't make any difference what model you got, Baldridge, whatever, I don't really, it's having the ownership from the people that are doing it and them being able to see and make the connection of what I do matters in this model. And I can put myself in a spot in that and contribute. And I mean, to me, that's, 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 that's like you said, well, go, it kind of becomes the DNA. It's not a book cover, it's the book itself. And I think that's the really important aspect of this whole thing. And I, you know, over the years, because I think when we first started it, it was kind of like, phew, deer in headlights, honestly.
Didn't know what we didn't know.
And we look at and we go, "Holy cow, what is all this stuff?" And this is some of the first stuff I've seen where you can take the Transportation Department, Nutrition Department, and break that down and see how that fits. And I don't say fragment it, but, but break it down into eatable pieces and then it has meaning to it. And I think that's one of the benefits that we've done of not preaching this Baldridge concept and we talk the talk, but don't walk it. And, you know, because we can spill off lots of, like you said, Cat 5, Cat 6, and all this kind of stuff. But if you don't do it, doesn't mean a heck of a lot of, because I've seen a lot of, a lot of coverage, but not much depth in districts that have tried to do that.
I would agree. And I, and I think that when you're out in schools and you hear from teachers and you hear from principals, that why the learning model resonates more than the pizza diagram that we started the presentation with is that rigorous and relevant curriculum is at the heart. And that's what educators do every day. And then being able to say, if I'm the Transportation Department, what is the work that I do every day? And not, everybody can make that Baldridge linkage chart fit, but the fact that it's our model fitting for our work rather than the other way around, I think is really powerful. And so as exciting as it is to see that momentum in the district, I hope, a caution I would have is let's not lose that homegrown approach and that sense of ownership in an effort to get on a bandwagon, that we can make those connections for visitors coming in from outside the system and we do that when we take them to our schools. We say, "Now, this is, this would be their process management piece." We can make that connection. But to have to have 25,000 students and the teachers that work with them and the principals have to learn a new vocabulary that doesn't ring as true for them, I think distorts the purpose that we set out on that journey for. Because it was really about making improvement for our district and personalizing that. So just a caution I would throw in.
Any other questions? Yeah. That's right. I'm referring to the slide, Canvas to Improve Access to Resources for Students. So how do we communicate this tool to our parents? Or do parents, are parents aware of this and can they guide their students in utilizing this at home?
I think we're at the place where there's an opportunity to market that a little bit more through the parent advisory. The hard thing for me to remember sometimes is we bought the learning management system two years ago, but actually, our first courses are only one year old. So this is a relatively new system. And one thing that we've tried to be very careful about is to not share it until it's ready and it's reliable, because there's a little bit of a deficit with technology. If, if out of the gate, it's not ready to go and it's not as robust as you want. So we've been very purposeful and intentional. And the other thing I think we've tried to do is that sometimes adults in the system, this is not how I learned. I've got to tell you, I'm, I'm proud of the fact that I've got a course in Canvas. And at 55 years old, I figured out how to, and had my phone a friend, people help me. But I think it's important that I'm willing to submit and try to do that to work through it. And I say that, that you've got staff in the district who, that's not how they do things. So you've got to create a desire for people to use those. And, and I think that's that piece of the listening. Show them what it can do, get people excited, and then go where staff tells us instead of, "We like the learning management system, you'll like it too, come, come learn with us." So it's, it's been a purposeful rollout. So that's our next step, if that makes sense.
Yeah, Andy.
So does Canvas, does it have the ability then for, for teachers to create videos or things that they can share with other teachers?
Our teachers here are already flipping, and I would defer that to...
A lot of flipping going on.
It takes about an hour of professional learning development for them to be able to do that flipped process. Some will do it faster. A flipped process is they would enter and create items that, a video, questions, there are common core rubrics that are in there. I could, as an English teacher in the system, grade your paper and I could give you video, video feedback. I could say, "Hey, Mr. Hosmer, I was looking at your paper, the first paragraph really just didn't pull me in. Here's a couple of suggestions I would make the student could give me." Well, here's what I was thinking. So we've only scratched the surface of that capacity. So teachers are already currently using those features.
And then those can be shared with other teachers in other schools?
Absolutely, absolutely.
There was one of the presentations, I brought this up before NSBA, some schools talking about teachers creating their own wikis. And I use that like I know what it means, but
Right.
But, but, and how excited they became in doing that for the feedback they got from other teachers in the district saying, "Oh, that was great." And, you know, had the ability to say, "You did, I'm using that right now in my classroom over here at Sequoia." You know, and having that ability, I think, does kind of unleash that, that potential and that autonomy that teachers
Absolutely. Here's what I would tell you is different. So when you look at the resource here, when we started looking at the curriculum resources, they were housed on that hard drive. And we knew that teachers weren't clicking in them. I was familiar with a wiki from some previous work that I had done. And a wiki is better than what you're seeing on those folders. But a wiki is not as good as Canvas. And so as soon as our teachers saw the choice, it was hands down, "Give me that." And, and that's where, where Robin and her department listened and kept following the teacher direction and the principal direction, saying, "This is what we need, give us more of that." So it just, it's blossomed.
And then I think the other thing that is exciting about this is that if you have this out to all teachers in all schools, then I think there is going to be some of that, "Why aren't we doing that?" What they're doing over there. That's really exciting, you know, and going, going to site leadership and saying, you know, you know, "Looks like they're going gangbusters over there doing this and why aren't we doing that here?" And, and so it seems like it opens that up.
A whole generation of people that are used to being able to do it asynchronously when we're not in the same place at the same time. And so that's the other benefit of that. I can log on at 10 o'clock at night, 7 o'clock at night, 4:00 a.m. if I'm up, and I can leverage those resources and collaborate with somebody who might be on a completely different schedule across town and all of those good things. One of the things I've heard the board say over and over is, "How do we get that good stuff out to everybody? This just helps us do it faster." We can do it with person-to-person meetings, but this gives us a much more cost-effective way to do that.
Any other feedback?
Leadership team at Kickapoo had a conversation around Canvas and Denise, I mean, Dr. Frederick, parents were complaining because their kids were talking about Canvas and they didn't know what it was. And so they were trying to figure out a strategy at Kickapoo, how to take care of that. So I thought that was kind of interesting.
Well, and I, I'm just blessed to be the person up here sharing this tonight. It truly is a collaborative effort with the members of Cabinet that serve on the learning model steering team and a lot of folks that are here in the audience, especially Shane Wagner, I'm going to embarrass him today. He's been really instrumental in, in really trying to push the envelope for the non-education people and really making that personalization work. So I, they make me look good, so thanks for that.
Well, thank you. I think that was a very informative, I know you've, and we appreciate your patience. We've pushed this off a couple agendas just because of full agendas, but that was well worth the wait. So that will move into items for separate consideration. Now, do we need to vote on this one tonight?
Yes.
We do, but not the other ones, right? Okay.
Just this one.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Ritter. As you recall, last month, the board authorized the offering for sale of the remaining 26.65 million of 2013 bonds and also the offering for sale of the refunding of 83.75 million of the 2006 series bonds. Those bonds went to market earlier today and I'm happy to report we're extremely happy with those results. And Greg Bricker is here and he's going to share the details of that.
At the regular, or the combined February study session, regular board meeting, you did take action on a go-to-market resolution that evening. We gave you some preliminary estimates on what the refund, I mean, we, we sold two bond issues today. One was the balance of the bonds that were voted last April, 26,650,000. And we brought to market bonds to refund 83.75 million dollars of bonds issued in '06. We'd indicated last month that we thought that the savings could be somewhere in the seven, maybe eight million dollar range. We did bring the issue to market this morning. All of the bonds are sold. And the final savings on the refunding piece totals
Yeah, germeral. Awesome. Fantastic, thank you.
And that is net of all fees and expenses and anything else that might lower than that.
Hope that gets in the paper. Yeah, well, I think that
Why did that happen?
Combination of things. The ability to do a negotiated sale, I'm just kidding. There just are very few municipal bonds available right now. There is a very low supply of bonds for a multitude of reasons that I won't bore you with, but there are just, it's a seller's market right now, particularly a high-quality seller's market. And you may remember, I'll remind you, the district got an upgrade in their bond rating last year from a AA minus to a solid AA. There are only 16 AA-rated school districts in the entire state of Missouri. There are nine districts that are rated higher than AA. So a total of 25 that would be AA or higher. You're one of those 16 school districts. So you are in a very exclusive company. And you would be the, well, no, Columbia would be the only other district that, non-metro, non-Kansas City-St. Louis, that would be in that category. A lot of the investors that came to play today are what we would call the very picky buyers, the ones that really only want to buy AAA or the absolute highest quality bonds. The fact that the supply is so low now, they're having to drop their criteria a little bit just to get the positions they need. And the combination of your higher rating, you kind of met in the middle today. We also took advantage of, we're talking pennies and nickels here, but we, we invested, the money from this refunding won't be needed till March of '16. That's when we can pay off the bonds of the '06 issue. So we'll, we're going to take this money from this bond issue, we're going to put it into a, a bank account and obviously try to invest it at the best rate possible. But even with these ridiculously low interest rates we've got right now, the ability to invest money is at an even ridiculous, more ridiculously low level. So anything we can earn in that money pays off. And we basically did what's called an open markets portfolio. And Bob Wells, I think, is here this evening, the investment manager for the district, helped Jim Caldwell, Jim's with the law firm of Gilmore and Bell in Kansas City, and myself and some other folks go out and put together a bid specs and bid about a $90 million investment of the proceeds of this refunding for the next two years. And we were able to increase the, the interest in that account by about $90,000. So that's a good day's work. The average interest rate on the new money bonds, I don't want to allow it to take second share, but was 3.52%. Just as a reference point, the issue we did last year, the 45 million, was at 4.16%. So we're down a full half percent from last year. You may wonder You may wonder why I keep doing all these bond issues in pieces. I'm kind of a big, I don't like putting all your money in one market. So we needed some cash last year, we did an issue last year, rates were going up last year, we sold as many bonds as we thought we could afford to sell last year. But we only sold about 60% of the authorization, knowing that we're going to bring the other 40% back this year, hoping that the market might be better, not knowing whether it would be better, but we were able to capitalize on a better market. So that is working well. So, you know, there's a bit of a running joke that's probably more of an inside joke, but I guess my partner, Dick Barto, has a saying that he uses from time to time. He approaches board meetings and says, "I don't have good news tonight, I have great news." So I'm going to steal his words and say, "We have great news tonight." We do have, and we have a request of the board to take a bit of a non-traditional approach and have an action item on a study session.
That's fine, we will do that for $10 million, so. So is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Lee, seconded by Mrs. Bush, that the board adopts the resolution authorizing the issuance of $26,650,000 principal amount in general obligations, school building bonds, and $76,800,000 principal amount in general obligation, school refunding bonds, and the bond purchase agreement, and that the board authorizes the superintendent and other officers and representatives of the district to take such other actions as may be necessary to carry out the offering for sale of the obligations. That's a mouthful. Thank you so much for your attention to the process and for serving us so well. We appreciate that, Mr. Bricker.
It is truly our pleasure. Thank you.
Moving on to the revision of Board of Education Policy BBB, BBBA. Dr. Ritter.
Yes, this is basically MSBA's recommendation coming off of statute. Mr. Ritter's had a chance to look at it this last week, I believe it was sent to you. You had a chance to look at it. So this is a first reading, so any questions?
Are there any questions, Mrs. Bush?
I assume this is because state law changed, or is it just more specificity that wasn't there before?
This is both. It is specific, and we now, this policy then is with state law on what you have to do to be a board member. So we're not in violation of that.
You can't be a felon. That's...
Well, not necessarily. You can't be under any sentence of probation or...
Yeah, okay.
So after you serve your period of probation, much like voting. And I think that's reflected in the policy.
Right.
So these aren't local change, I mean, these aren't local changes, these are changes that are being made to abide by state statute.
Exactly.
It looks like it tracks, from what I read, the state statute, it looks like it tracks state statute.
Any other questions? And again, just a reminder that we subscribe to MSBA's policy support program, was it last year?
Yes.
Or a couple, maybe a couple of years ago.
A couple of years, yes.
And so this is just the continuation of the work to, that they are providing us with feedback on policies, and we are slowly but surely making it through the vast number of policies that we have. Okay, so we will vote on the first reading in two weeks.
Right.
Moving on to curriculum resource adoption. Mrs. Moore?
Allison.
Oh, Allison. Mrs. Pilly.
Mrs. Pilly.
Good evening, Dr. Ritter, members of the board. We have, you have an action item in front of you for two programs, resource adoptions, and we are going to kind of briefly go over the timelines for each of those, and who's been involved, and a few highlights of each of the programs. And we're going to start with world language.
It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Mrs. LaChea Ek, and she is the department chairperson and Spanish teacher at Glendale High School, and she's played a key role in this process. I'd like to start by reviewing the timeline of our resource evaluation, and we started with an open house. We had teachers, we took materials, the parent advisory committee, we looked closely at the resources, we came up with some finalists, then we invited publishers in to conduct some presentations for teachers and some of our local patrons. And following a very prescribed rubric and a process, we came up with the recommendations, which we're pleased to present to you tonight. Some of the criteria we used, we wanted to align to the major instructional goals, which we brought forward to you last August. Also, best practices of language instruction. We wanted content which is engaging and authentic, well-organized, differentiated, that provides an inclusive and extensive view of world language, is authentic, involves a lot of technology, and provides support for both the instructor and the student. As a basic overview, we currently offer French and Spanish in our three PYP program schools. We also offer middle school French on our, and/or Spanish in middle schools. In high school, we offer French and Spanish, and then American Sign Language at Parkview, Japanese at Kickapoo, and Latin at Glendale. Our next steps are going to be face-to-face trainings in April and September, and online training via Canvas. We also are going to use Canvas for our professional learning. And something we're going to do differently is rather than write curriculum guides which are printed, we are creating course shells in Canvas, which teachers will be able to download and personalize. And it will be a one-click platform, so students will be able to immediately access all the technology which accompanies the programs we're purchasing. And I'd like Mrs. LaChea Ek to share a little bit about how she currently uses Canvas in her world language classes.
I found that it was very helpful for me to address students that were absent, for instance, so that they would not be behind once they came to the classroom. So I started using Canvas, and Nicole Lemon will be very proud of my progress since January. But I have all my classes now on Canvas. I am using the flip classroom concept. I did that just this last weekend with snow days and spring break looming. I'm trying to move the pace along, and the expectation was that they would access videos that I've uploaded. I had put worksheets on Canvas, so if a student is absent, they can see what we do in class every single day. I have very detailed instructions as to what we do. I upload the worksheet so they can come to class, not behind the eight ball, if you will. They will know what we've done in class, they can download the documents, and they can view the videos that I have uploaded to Canvas. I'm looking forward to our new adoption, being able to utilize the technology that that, those textbooks are bringing in, so that they can then access those resources as well, because it is mind-boggling what we have available to them through our new adoption. Thank you.
We're going to finish up the summer with our advanced placement training, because we are now offering advanced placement world language classes in French, Japanese, and Spanish. Then we will have ongoing training beginning in the fall, and we will continue to monitor our process and meet the needs of our students and our teachers. We'd be happy to address any questions you have at this time.
A quick question about, and this may be more, not specifically world language necessarily, but just, and it may be Nicole's question, I don't know, but when you look at the resource of adoption, how do you, and we're not going to do this again for seven years. Hopefully between now and then, we may be looking at online classes and those, how do you pick the resource today, thinking the next step is it may be online next year or the year after? And do those translate well? Or was that part of the criteria as you look at resource adoption with the thought that ultimately, a lot of these classes will be online, I hope?
I would absolutely say that that was one of our considerations. We have a limited number of resources available for us to even consider, so that was one of the things we looked at, is trying to find resources that provided that technological aspect to it that will appeal to today's students that are very tech savvy, but at the same time, understanding that they may not be where we sometimes expect them to be. So being able to bring our teachers in, train our teachers to train our students how to utilize those resources. And I think we did a good job in finding a resource that will really translate well into what we need for the next seven to eight years.
I think one of the other, I don't know that that's on, one of the other lessons we learned with the very first Canvas courses is that a lot of vendors will tell you that they have digital textbooks, and some of them are PDFs, and there's a big difference. So we've had an improvement cycle in how we do the adoption, so that they're true digital books, so that everything can be housed online and can be used either way. So as soon as we would be able to flood devices, we would be able to flip that switch. And we also think that'll be a cumbersome process, a little messy, but we are looking forward with that eye, so that we don't lose any resources.
I guess my, mine is much more in the form of a comment, and it has really nothing to do with K-5 mathematics and K-12 world languages. But I look here at textbooks, K-5 mathematics, $1.8 million. We just heard a presentation about Canvas and about teachers being unleashed to create content and create things. You know, I know districts around the country are starting to move completely away from textbooks and completely away from even online, even textbooks that have been digitized and put online, because that's kind of not where we need to be going. So, you know, we talk about a million dollars for fully funding parents' teachers, and now we've got a $1.8 million, and 1.8 is just textbooks and resources. I guess my question is, is this the best textbooks and resources that we can get? Or is this the best way to present K-5 math to our kids going forward? My concern is that it's the best textbook and resources out there. We've got seven vendors, we look at them, and this one's the best one, and it costs $1.8 million. It troubles me when we talk about technology, we talk about, and we just talked about how teachers are, you know, doing this for themselves, and, you know, we all went to school, we all had textbooks, and we all knew how exciting those textbooks were. And I'm being facetious there. So again, to me, it's a big line item for, where I don't know that we need to be there.
I've spoken to some of the vendors that we've been working with, especially at the K-5 math level, because I've worked with that the closest. And whenever we do the $1.8 million, that includes online access for those students. And they actually talked about, when we had traditional textbooks, they could print it, and then they were done for a while until the new edition came out. With the online textbooks, it's actually, while the print cost isn't as much, they have more of a human resources cost, because they are continuously updating that content. If there's a bug, or if there's a problem, they have human resources to address those things. If there's a shift in standards, it's quicker to update the technology side, but it's a human resource investment more than a print investment, is kind of how it was explained to me. And also with the K-5 math, the students aren't learning math by reading a textbook. They have to have those manipulatives, those visuals, that connect, the books that we're going to talk about, that connect that math to the real world, so that those students have more of a conceptual understanding.
No, and I understand that. I guess my question is whether we're at a point, or whether we should be at a point, or whether we need to be moving to a point where we're creating a lot more of this in-house or accessing it for free that's already out there.
I think, I think, I can't tell if it's working or not. I think sometimes it's easy to see it as an either-or, and I see it as an and, that you've got to have some common framework that is grade level specific, that provides the floor, not the ceiling. And so what we've tried to do is to craft a blended approach, because if you are a teacher, and I think it gets increasingly difficult as you move up through the system, and you're preparing for multiple classes, in theory, it sounds great that you would have time to craft this lesson, and you would be able to mine resources, and you'd be able to access those, vet them, package them, create a smart board activity, align them to the grade level. One of the things that curriculum teams have moved away from, and those that have been in education laugh, about, "We're not going to teach dinosaurs every year because you like it." So we've got to have this guaranteed and viable curriculum. Textbooks are a component piece of that. What we're doing in the curriculum department is taking a ruthless, relentless look at what we are selecting and pairing back the resources that we're using, because we think the adoption ought to be that base floor of what provides that very first blush. And then what we've tried to do is to bring in teacher teams and leverage Canvas to say, "What are those additional engaging activities that teachers are creating that have been vetted by a common team of professionals, both the curriculum coordinators, facilitators, and that CDC, those teacher experts in our own district? And then how do we use Canvas to push those out?" There may come a time when it will be an either-or, I just don't think we're there yet. So we're trying to really be relentless about what we select. We've also been burned a little bit with some of the digital resources. There have been some vendors who have over-promised and under-delivered, and some of them are leading vendors whose names I will not mention in an open session, but they have been reliable, go-to electronic resource vendors that haven't delivered. And so at the end of the day, when I have calls, and poor Mrs. Pilly is fielding calls, and IT's phones are blowing up because people can't access the digital resources, or students don't have access to technology at home, we've got to have some common ground to work through that. And it's a much more complicated problem, and so we're trying to work at it from both ends, to shave resources where we can. The other thing that we're learning, and I think the curriculum team has listened very well to teachers, is that sometimes we adopt too many things, and there's not time in seven years to get comfortable with all of the things. So we've got to strike that just-right balance of what can we really use, and what's helpful, and what doesn't leave a teacher up at 2:00 a.m. trying to mine resources which may be accurate and may not. And I think it's even a bigger problem in the sciences. So is it junk science, is it accurate science? Who makes that decision? So we've got to have some way to provide that robust, rigorous curriculum. So we're working towards, I think, some of the same things that you want, I'm just not sure we're quite there yet.
Mr. Lee, do you have a comment?
I'm going to move us along a little bit.
Yeah, and following up what this, I mean, we pride ourselves on sort of the Springfield learning model and the way we do it. And maybe, I put words in your mouth, could we take $1.8 million and give it to four or five incredibly talented math teachers or language arts teachers, and say, "Develop a Springfield curriculum for this class," and invest that money and develop our own curriculum? And, because we know what it's supposed to do, we got all the guidelines, we got the MIGs, we've got all that, so we know what it should be, because I know schools are doing that. They're going away from the textbooks, because digital textbooks are still textbooks. And I don't know if that's where Mr. Hosmer was going.
I hear a little bit that it's probably in transition, it sounds like.
Yeah, and so I just, because we got incredibly talented teachers that really know how to teach...
We do.
And know the curriculum, and should we let them get some freedom to do that?
But like Marty said, kind of, we need to purchase the floor and expand from there, because while we do have incredible teachers, it's the time, it's the resources that bigger publishing companies have that we don't have. So like she said, we're starting here, and then our teachers can just make it that much better, and we have total confidence.
Are there any other specific questions about world language? I would just like to say, I think with both of these, and this is a little bit of a broken record, as I look, and I don't mean this to diminish any work that our staff has done in developing and being a part of the selection committee, but again, I would like to see parental representation, and maybe even student representation at those higher-level kinds of adoptions. And I know that some of these people that are on here are also parents, but I'd like there just to be a consideration of having that... but I'd like there just to be a consideration of having that parental perspective on there.
One of the changes that we made this year, and we felt like we weren't really sure what to do about putting the names of those parents, but we've brought those materials to the parent advisory because sometimes those parents don't follow through and attend or it's spotty and it's not typically representative of the entire district constituency. So we felt like it was really important and Dr. Ritter was willing to make a space. We actually had a table, so two different nights, all of those materials were there. Parents were able to give questions and even provide input as to what they thought was their best. So it elevated it to a little bit and instead of them having to come on a separate night, which they were still invited and they could, it was a way to honor their time. You've come here for this other purpose and you still have this. So that is an improvement cycle in the curriculum adoption process, based on your feedback.
I'm going to move us to math. Thank you, language ladies.
I think they're going to wheel our table of goodies over here. Hopefully, nothing falls down. Similar to Nancy's presentation, here's kind of a timeline that we put together. We had our Super CDC review, seven programs, including the program that we're currently using. They scored and reviewed those, or we asked principals and department leads from nearly every department to come in and do that as well. We took it to the parent advisory. And then a team of special ed Title I curriculum, our CDC chairs, who I have not introduced yet, this is Carrie Sykes and Kim Bush, and they're phenomenal. I don't know what I would do without them. We all went to four districts around here that were implementing our top four programs that we are looking at to see the curriculum in action. And I think that was very, very helpful. We had vendors come in and present to our Super CDC. They all cycled through four presentations. We also recorded all of those presentations and made them available for all K-5 teachers and principals. We shared the ranking process that we wanted in the form of feedback with the principals and gave them a deadline and then we compiled information and then here we are. So the second selection criteria that we used with the vendor presentations by our Super CDC, you can see up here, just that conceptual understanding, a chance to problem solve, any chance they can get, tools to differentiate for students. Make sure it's teacher friendly, student friendly, has the technology component, has the assessments that are usable for teachers, and very little or to no supplemental resources required. And we, here's the results after they ranked them. And MyMath was ranked first by 32 of our 40 voting entities. And we had all elementary schools as well as a couple of other departments, Title I, Special Ed. We just really wanted to make sure that everyone's voice was heard in the selection process. So I will let Kim and Carrie talk a little bit about the materials.
So MyMath does specifically address the Common Core with particular emphasis also on mathematical practices, which we all know is important. But if we're going to have the students get the most out of these resources that we are spending money on, we want them to also be engaged and feel that it's relevant as well. So the student edition does include the standard that is being addressed or standards being addressed in each chapter, at the beginning of the chapter, in the student edition where kids can see it, it's explained to them in kid-friendly language, as well as the mathematical practices being listed there for them to see and track because the ones that are being focused on during that chapter are highlighted. And throughout the lessons, whenever a mathematical practice is being practiced or used, then it's highlighted and it refers back to what that practice is. So the kids are able then to have more of a grasp of what they're learning, how they're learning it, and then finally, why they're learning it. The essential question for each chapter is also identified and is shown at the top of each page in the lesson so that the kids can see that relevance and have meaning behind what they're learning and get more out of these textbooks that we're purchasing. Also, there is literacy development embedded within MyMath through vocabulary. There's review vocabulary because certainly the proper terminology and understanding of the meaning of that terminology is essential for the kids to get that conceptual understanding. There are also vocabulary cards, which I believe you have examples of there in front of you. And those cards are something that is also found within this book, which is quite large when you start the year. But by the time you're through the year, you've taken out those vocabulary cards and the kids are able to take those with them and use them to study. Not only the definitions, but also each vocabulary card has an activity for them to do so that they can then apply that knowledge. Foldables are another example that you have there with you, which I, as a teacher, find that I have to supplement often with foldables or some other kind of interactive study guide. Well, it comes right here in the student book, so the kids have access to that with every single chapter. Kids also find further support for literacy in the real-world problem-solving readers that come at an approaching level, on-level and beyond level set for them, where they can both connect and then apply those mathematical concepts that they're learning to what we're studying in science or social studies or health, which helps me as a teacher to integrate all of those different content areas with their math and as well as their reading. Finally, students also have manipulatives to use, which you can see several examples of that here on the table, which allow them that concrete, hands-on use of math tools that will help them make that move from the concrete onto abstract or conceptual understanding. And also, they're provided within their student book, real-world investigations that give in-depth problem-solving opportunities. And also, one of my favorites is the find the error questions where they have to look at things in a little bit of a different way, which we know in solving problems, we often have to think a little bit differently than what might be our first choice. Also, at the beginning of every chapter, kids are given an option, or actually, not the option, but they're given the opportunity to take an am I ready assessment. And throughout every chapter, there are numerous assessments, various different types, that allow kids to monitor their own progress. So besides me monitoring how they're doing, they can actually see how they're doing as well by using their student edition. There are readiness quizzes, check my progress, there are test practice questions that are embedded in the lesson. There are vocabulary reviews using crossword puzzles. So very engaging ways for the kids to keep track of their learning. There also are vocabulary checks and test prep problems that will allow them to do some reflection and take their thinking more deeply than just a multiple choice type question. And finally, all of these resources are available online for students too. So the entire student book is online, plus there are videos, there are online tutoring lessons, there are virtual manipulatives, so the tools that are here on the table, they can also use online. There are skills checks, worksheets, there's homework, there's also homework history. So if a child misses school, they can go back and see what they had covered while they were gone. And the real-world problem-solving readers that are so valuable for the integration of core curriculum are also found online, so they can take a look at those at various levels online. And finally, the address for this website is found at the bottom of every page of their book nearly. So they can see that always is an option for them as well. Thank you.
We can talk to you about why we chose the program as teachers. The main reason, when we looked at the four programs, two of the four were programs that had been reinvented. And the other two were programs that were built after Common Core came in place. And they were built specifically for Common Core. And MyMath is one of the programs that was built specifically for Common Core after Common Core was introduced. So the philosophy of those programs is specifically Common Core philosophy. Also, each of the lessons teach only one or two standards and it's totally in opposition to what we're currently doing with everyday math because each lesson would have several different standards. But now we're moving to a program that focuses strictly on a couple standards. In each lesson, there's three different levels of rigor. In every lesson, there's real-world problem solving. In the program, there's also 21st century learning, there's videos, animation, video tutors, virtual manipulatives, and even e-assessments. A huge part of this program is literacy. There's daily writing in the program, there's real-world problem-solving readers like Kim talked about. This program also fits nicely with the Springfield learning model. Communication, collaboration, and critical thinking and a relevant curriculum are all important. This program has something called daily math talks and the kids have an opportunity to talk about math daily. They communicate, they critical think with higher order thinking problems. They also have chapter projects and they even have an online collaboration project so they can collaborate with their peers online. So again, this goes hand in hand with the Springfield learning model. There's three different types of assessment in this program, like Kim alluded to. There's the diagnostic that the kids take at the beginning of the unit. Then there's daily formative assessment, which helps teachers make decisions about what their students are learning and what they need to learn next. And then finally, the summative assessments. One of the things that we're most excited about this program is, you know that we've been really successful with Reader's Workshop and that we're going to launch into Math Workshop. We've kind of been bad about everyone doing the same thing in math. We've done whole group math instruction. And now we're going to be able to move to small group flexible math instruction. And it won't be the same groups all the time because I could have a student who is really weak in subtraction. But when I get to geometry, you know, he's really good at that. So they're not the same groups, our groups are not stagnant, they're going to be dynamic and they're going to be changing. So we're really excited about that. And this program offers us resources for that. In every lesson, there are activities for on-grade level students, above-grade level students, below-grade level students, as well as our ELL learners. In addition, we always have the question, what do we do with those students when I'm meeting with a small group? What are the other students doing? Because we want to make sure what they're doing is engaging and worthwhile for them. This program offers these cards, there are games, activities or learning stations for the kids to do. And we know that those are worthwhile activities for the kids to do and they're not wasting their time. There's also technology resources for the kids to use. And so we're really excited about that as well. And the final reason that we're excited about this program is it's comprehensive. We believe everything in this program, we need to meet our students' needs. We don't need to use any supplemental resources, this should do the trick for our students.
Mr. Sykes, do you want him to answer?
How about the kids that don't have access to technology at home?
Well, they don't have to have access to technology at home.
They do have it at school?
We don't have it as much as we would like it. That's definitely an opportunity for improvement. But I think we're trying to build so that elementary classrooms do have more technology. But a lot of these games and things like that that are online, even if, since they are working in stations around the room, if a teacher is working with a small group, they can use their smart board as a computer and that could be one of the stations where they're interacting with something that's technology-based.
We also have laptop cards that we're able to take to our classrooms and have a class set.
Okay. Okay, good.
I have a question. One of the presenters talked about our current curriculum, Everyday Math, and a little bit of what the difference is. This focuses on one standard or two standards per lesson. Everyday Math, it was my understanding that there was a lot of integration into everything. How, seems like a big shift. And we've just gotten a whole generation of parents and students kind of used to Everyday Math. What will be the transition in helping parents understand this curriculum? Helping students, helping teachers, you know, because it does seem to be kind of a different focus or a different emphasis.
Most of the parents that I have spoken with about our current curriculum, I think will be excited to transition to this program. Mostly, probably because since it does focus on one concept at a time, that's probably more of what they were used to growing up. And then once those students get to the middle school world, they do focus on one concept at a time. It's not that every topic is integrated. So it's harder for those fifth graders to transition to middle school math with having Everyday Math in their background. There are some really great parts about Everyday Math. To do it well and to implement it with fidelity across the system, we probably needed more professional development on that program so that teachers felt more comfortable with it. But I think teachers are very excited about moving to this program. And I, from the parents that have spoken with me, most of the parents seem excited to move away from Everyday Math.
Well, and I guess, I've been on the board long enough to go through the cycle and,
Sure.
you know, we were told that Everyday Math was the be-all, the end-all, the way-to-go. That, you know, and I guess, where is our level of confidence? You know, how can we feel confident that this is going to be an improvement? Or, you know, is it just the evolution of math instruction? Is it kind of the evolution of Springfield Public Schools? I mean, I guess that's where my question might be.
I think one thing I'd add is that I'm with you. I've seen the pendulum swing both ways. And so I think one of the things that moved the swing to Everyday Math is that we know that good learning is recursive, that you've got to be revisiting some of those concepts. I think Everyday Math just got a little carried away with that to the exclusion of, do you have deep foundational knowledge of this before we go on to the other? So what we think this program does is takes that learning from Everyday Math and says, let's do this slow deliberate deep drink, if you will, of these concepts. And then let's embed some projects along the way that require students to be building that skill in those different aspects and then the integration with the reading and the writing. So too much of what has happened in curricular areas has been very segmented and siloed. And that is one of the breaths of fresh air about the Common Core Missouri learning standards that we're focused on now, is that in the real world, you do math and reading at the same time. You don't go to the grocery store and just go, oh, nope, I'm only going to do math right now. And so what we're starting to see is that infusion and that integration, which I think is going to translate into higher levels of engagement for kids.
Any other questions from the board?
Oh, some comments, I guess. I share Chris's concern as the only board member that is now going to have to figure this out. My kids, after trying to figure out Everyday Math, I do have a vested interest in K-5 math adoption. So I share some of Chris's concerns about this Everyday Math being the answer and then not being the answer. And I'm assuming since this was developed after Common Core that we don't have any data that other districts have used this and gotten good results.
It's pretty new.
Okay, so we're kind of hoping, is that right?
Um, I would say calculated risk, but, and I don't have a crystal ball to predict where we're going to be, you know, in seven years, whenever we're up for the next adoption. But I do feel like we really took our time and made sure that we looked at all of the different programs from every angle and made sure that this one really had, the teachers feel comfortable with this program. And I don't know that the teachers always felt comfortable with Everyday Math. There were some algorithms in Everyday Math that were, you wouldn't see outside of that program. And the teachers, like I said, the professional development, there wasn't probably enough of it to make sure that that was completely implemented the right way. And so teachers didn't always feel comfortable with some of that. And teachers feel comfortable with this program.
And this MyMath has been sent out to all K-5 teachers to kind of get their feedback?
Yeah, we had the Super CDC, they were the ones in the presentations, but they have all had online access. I've sent it out about four or five different times. They all had access to the videos to watch the vendor presentations if they wanted to. And then as we, we just started a Curriculum Corner newsletter this year and I've been trying to do slow drips of, hey, check this out in the demo site to try to get them on board, you know, or at least learning about the program in small increments so that it's not so overwhelming.
And the response has been?
Fantastic.
And again, I, just in the short time that I've looked at this, it certainly seems like it embeds a lot more reading. And it certainly seemed like it embeds a lot more math across all the other disciplines, which, you know, my daughter goes to Roundtree and Pipkin where the NYPD and PYP kind of, you know, do that, where they want to embed that learning across all the areas. I think that's, I think that's good. This is an example, I think, we have a lot of Common Core haters out there. And one of the arguments they make, and they're right on target with this argument, which is that Common Core is a cash bonanza for McGraw-Hill because now we have Common Core and then all of a sudden, McGraw-Hill develops a curriculum for, that's Common Core. No, I'm not saying not just Common, but that's one of the criticisms of Common Core. And I think it's probably a criticism that, it's maybe not a criticism, but it's certainly a truism. It's a truism. So, but again, the math that I've seen in Common Core, we need to be there. And if this is going to get that deeper understanding of- to be there. And if this is going to get that deeper understanding of the concepts, and I think it is, and doing it with a lot more reading is going to be good. But again, we've got to...
Go ahead.
McGraw-Hill was making a fortune off of print textbooks. Can we remember that? A whole lot of many. So I think we're saying it's maybe that we still have a very small number of textbook and educational suppliers, and that's been happening over several decades. So I don't think we can say, oh, they're right, this is, these companies have been around making a fortune off of print material. So let's not, let's not give any kind of credence to that, really. And the world has changed. Seven years later, what we need to do is different, and I think it's going the right direction. I like the manipulatives. I like the interaction, the online. I think it's great.
Looks like you have one last piece?
I do, very quickly. Part of this adoption also includes a program called Alex. And I was going to show a quick video about it, but I'm not going to do that, just to save a little bit of time. But Alex is a program that is McGraw-Hill, McGraw-Hill owns now. They were recently purchased by them. But basically, this is a third-grade classroom at Pershing that you can see in the picture here. And we have teachers at all of our elementary buildings in our alternative site piloting this program at this level and seeing kind of how it, how it works with our curriculum, and using it almost like a, it's one of the learning stations that the students cycle through. But basically, the students take a pre-assessment. It determines the topics that they are ready to learn and works them through modules in addition to what the teacher is doing. We are using this at our high school right now in Algebra I lab, and some of these students are just saying, you know, the teacher has to teach third-grade content or Algebra I content, but if they don't have fourth-grade content, this program allows them to go back and pick some of that stuff up. So the teachers are really having great things to say about this as well. Kim's piloting in her classroom as well. And then, the last thing, just our next step, similar to Nancy, we're going to do, we're piloting right now, we're going to do a blended learning approach, so we will have some pre-learning in Canvas as well as a face-to-face training, administrator training this summer. The company offered to do a power user training, so if teachers come to the face-to-face and there's still topics that they weren't able to cover, but they could go deeper into it, they could attend a summer academy for free, and then ongoing training and monitoring to make sure that everything's working.
Okay, so just if any board members would have questions about the adoption between now and the 18th, they can get those to you. Is that right, Mrs. Pilly?
Could you send the video link to us so we could see that?
Oh, yeah, I think you're...
On the board, Doc.
Oh, it is on there?
Yeah, it's right in the...
I'm sorry?
Oh, wait, we didn't get the PowerPoint, did we?
Yeah, you did.
Oh, yeah, we have it, yeah.
You have it right here.
Okay. Thank you so much.
There it is. It's working. It works. It's right here. It's working.
Moving on to 5.04, naming of the Westport Middle School Gymnasium. Dr. Harrell?
Dr. Ritter, excuse me, and members of the board, a request was brought forth by the Westport Pride Committee to name the Westport Gymnasium after longtime teacher and coach Alan Potts. Members of the committee included administrators, teachers, community members, alumni, and parents. Following the guidelines established by the Board of Education Policy FF, the proposal was presented to the district's naming of facilities committee for their approval, and then submitted to Dr. Harrell for review. The proposal was then forwarded to Cabinet for their approval. Coach Alan Potts attended Roundtree Elementary School, Jarrett Junior High, and graduated from Parkview High School, where he was a member of the basketball team, and also achieved All-State status. Alan attended Drew College and accepted his first teaching and coaching position at Pleasant View Middle School. After three years, he moved to Studee, where he served for 32 years as a physical education teacher and coach of multiple sports. He is currently serving as the middle-school site athletic coordinator at Westport. I want to read a couple quotes from colleagues of Alan. To Alan, winning was not determined by the lights on the scoreboard. Winning was giving the kids the opportunity to be a part of a team. Another quote, Alan made a point of building character, self-esteem, and teaching kids how to overcome adversity. I'd also like to read one letter from a former student. Just recently, I moved back to Springfield with my wife and two sons. My sons will learn the basketball fundamentals I was taught under Coach Potts at Studee Junior High from the fall of 1988 to the spring of 1990. Coach Potts was not only my general physical education teacher during my junior-high school career, but was also the only coach on the planet willing to give me a chance to play basketball. I was and still am the world's worst point guard. Despite my obvious lack of dexterity and talent, he continued to support and encourage me. Coach Potts was always kind-hearted, patient, and willing to take time to work with me. He taught and inspired greatness with a true love of sports. I hold a lot of respect for him as a teacher, coach, and a man. Few people can do it all and do it well. Coach Potts is one of those few. You know, in the coaching field, many people come up to us after the season, and they say, what kind of season did you have? Well, sometimes, we don't know what kind of season we had until 20 or 25 years later. After reading this letter, I don't know what the record was during the 1998 and 1990, those two years, but I do know that they had a successful season. Tonight, we have with us the Westport community, Gary Tu, principal, and Teresa Young, the head of the Pride Committee. And I want to thank them for all their work, and also to Mr. Marsh in our Athletic Department, and appreciate all of their efforts. Our recommendation tonight is that the board approve the naming of the Westport K-8 Gymnasium, Coach Alan Potts Gymnasium.
Are there any questions?
I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Fisher? Some pretty powerful testimony there, and a great choice. And thank you, Mr. Tu and Mrs. Young, for being here.
We ever think about just using the last name?
Pardon?
We ever think about just using the last name? Potts Gymnasium. Seems like a lot of words.
We'll take that back to the committee. They save a little money. So, thank you.
Thank you. The items for, routine action items were presented, including a lot of minutes from the meetings that we had in February, so take a look at those. And we are now to the section of public comments to address non-agenda items. We do have two speakers tonight. And just a reminder that each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak, and it will be timed. You'll see the time on the bottom of the screen. It is inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed to the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or the district office. And our first speaker is Kitty Lou Maxson.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Ritter, members of the Cabinet. I'm Kitty Lou Maxson, a fourth-grade teacher on leave from the classroom, currently serving as Springfield NEA president. I am proud to represent the teachers, school nurses, and clerical employees of this district. As you know, as early as September 1, 2013, SNEA issued a request to this board to be involved in the interview process for selection of a new superintendent. You may also know that we issued objections to the blended process that was presented to us by this board's leadership. The process was confusing and has proven to be untimely. While I know from speaking with Dr. Jungman yesterday that an excellent candidate was selected, teacher input and representation for that input was determined exclusively by this board. Many of you may remember that when teachers and counselors and librarians elected a representative a few years ago, we used a process that was clearly outlined in policies that this board approved. SNEA did not agree with some aspects of that process, but we abided by it to the letter and were duly elected to be the exclusive representative through a fair election process, including the district's legal counsel, who played a major role in putting the process together. Many districts across Missouri now use that model in choosing employee representatives. Recently, the district received some unwanted publicity when a prospective school board candidate contested the validity of the district's signature counting process. The simple truth was that he and another prospective candidate had failed to get enough valid signatures to have their names on the ballot. Those individuals do not join you here tonight to share input on school board decisions. Similarly, in every contested board election, some candidates have failed to get enough votes to serve. Some of those candidates persistently criticized how this board did its job, and they received thousands of votes, but that wasn't enough to share input or to serve with you here tonight. I would like to respectfully remind the board that it is not this board's duty to intervene and choose a teacher representative. Teachers have already done that, and if they wish to change their representative, the board policy that many of you voted for clearly explains how that may be done. Springfield NEA is honored to serve the teachers of this district as their representative in negotiating the best possible agreements with the district regarding compensation, benefits, and working conditions. We honor the process that has led to a better understanding of this district through a respectful dialogue with administration. We ask that this board honor the representation process that it put in place years ago so that we may continue to move forward together with mutual respect and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Beverly Fruits.
Dr. Ritter and the board, I am a great-grandmother of quite a few children. I have three of them, two of them that is in grade school, and one more coming up. I don't like the idea that they have to walk to school. One of my great-grandchildren just got out of the hospital yesterday from walking to school. She got pneumonia. I don't understand why we can't pick up these young kids from grade school to sixth grade and give them a ride to school, and then pick them up at school and bring them back home. I just don't understand it. We have Lotto money that went to the school board. We have taxes that goes to the school board. I don't understand why these young kids can't be picked up and took to the schools and stuff. I don't want one of my, something to happen to one of my grandchildren to happen to that little girl that happened last weekend, I mean, two weeks ago. I walked in that deal last Saturday, week ago Saturday. I cried for that little girl. I don't want anything to happen to one of my grandkids. So please, think about putting buses out there for little kids from kindergarten to the sixth, to the sixth grade, from seventh to twelfth. They can pretty well take care of themselves. But some of these little kids can't. Some of these kids have to walk to school because they don't live in the district that you tell them that they have to walk. I don't know the boundaries, but I know that some of these kids have to walk, and two of my grandchildren are doing it right now. And I don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fruits. And Dr. Ritter, will somebody follow up on Mrs. Fruits? Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on to legislative update, and I guess I would just ask if there are things that could be held for a couple weeks that would be preferable, or is there anything?
Legislative? Beverly, it's...
They're going on spring break next week, right? Or, oh, today?
Yeah.
Oh, yay.
Yay, yay, yay. Just mainly, education is just, it's the funding and it's transfers, a lot. So, and that's all kind of going all over the place right now. That's all I can say.
Just one comment, since we had early childhood education, Senator Dixon did file his bill to fund, to be able to establish sales tax to fund early education.
In Green County or?
It's statewide.
Statewide?
Well, it's still geared towards the screen.
It's Green County.
Okay.
But there are others trying to attach.
But the bill's out there again, so there'll be discussion.
Enablement legislation.
Yes, yeah.
Anything else that other board members are aware of? Any conversations? Anything under future issues? Anything else under other? Just a reminder to do your plus deltas, we got through a lot of material tonight. I think it was what we've been talking about, you know, really, a study session where we got through a lot of different materials. We're able to ask a lot of questions. I appreciate the administrative team's preparation and materials. And we do need a vote to...